Did you go?
Yep.
All right, so we will go ahead and call to order. This is City Council Business Meeting for Thursday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six oh one P M. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester Baker.
Here.
Reva.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mayor Tom Phillips.
I am here. We do have a quorum, so we will move on. Item number two is pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand and say pledge of allegiance? Hey, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing none. Can I get a most approved agenda? Okay, by Livingston, seconded by Reva. All those in favor, say aye. Most post saying? Motion carries. Item four, it's welcome with guests and public comment. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you participating in your local government. Uh, we'll go ahead and open a dais at this point in time for items that are not on the agenda. Uh, we'll give you three minutes' time limit to address council. Uh, we can't take action on these tonight since they're not on the agenda. Also, would you like to comment on any item that's in the consent agenda now would be also be tonight. So if they have any changes? And please state your name and address.
Judy Corcoran, seventeen thirty-six Bristol.
Uh, Lucinda Sperry, seventeen ninety.
She's here to translate for me because I only have half a voice, which is making half the community happy. I'm here primarily tonight on behalf of Norwalk hometown pride, but I also want to say to many of you, I'm still writing thank you notes for what you did for me whenever that couple of weeks ago, and that has meant so much to me. Tonight, I just want to remind you that we're beginning the fifth year of Front Porch Norwalk, which is pretty amazing to me. In that time, um, I know we've had at least a hundred and thirty-five gatherings, but the more I thought about it, I bet it's closer to two hundred because some people have repeated year after year, and we typically have ten to fifteen each time. So that's, I guess, a lot of neighborliness going out in the community. We start June fourteen, put the flyers with all the dates, but I wanted to make sure you knew about June fourteen. That is, that will be a regular one, but also a special activity that night because Norwalk is home to a lot of refugee and immigrant family. You may not know that. I've been fortunate to be connected in various ways to some of them. So the refugee and immigrant families that live behind Greg Young in the Cedar Brook Apartments, they have wanted to have their own Front Porch Norwalk. And I don't think Kathy and Doris are here, but obviously you may know they teach every Monday night English language to the moms. Um, the moms don't even know how to read in their own language I just learned. So Kathy and Doris are taking care of that. So we are gonna do a special but regular Front Porch Norwalk on June fourteenth. We're hoping all of you that are out that night, and the officer, the fire department was, that's right. Uh, we'll stop by because we really want to welcome them to the community, and we're hoping hometown pride members will turn out too for that evening. Then for the rest of the summer, we're still working on the logistics. Um, I've lost some helpers, but I've gained a couple new ones to sign up. So we'll get all those figured out. Anything you want to say?
I did, um, as far as Warren County Hometown Pride, uh, this has been a really nice project that has been successful for a while. It's nice. It's free. Easy to communicate, and I know a lot of our other communities are joining in in their hometown pride. So kudos to Norwalk.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we will move on. Item five, presentations. Uh, our first presentation tonight, Travis Stanley and Crystal Ellis is here to talk about the Norwalk Ministerial Association.
I am Travis Stanley. You need to know where I live.
I don't think so.
One of my main street. Stop by. Uh, Front Porch Norwalk will open up for that. But I am the president this year of the Norwalk Area Ministerial Association, uh, and we're not here to ask for money, uh, today. Um, but, uh, we wanted to, uh, keep you updated, uh, on what all we do, who we are, and the kind of work that we do in the community because a lot of it uh, isn't seen, and that's part of the success of us, uh, is that we keep a lot of things, uh, from coming to the surface and try to meet needs before they become critical. And the ministerial association is made up of all, uh, churches in Norwalk as well as, uh, all the churches in Coming, uh, which is one. Uh, but together we, uh, support a general fund as well as a number of ministries, including the, uh, food pantry that's at, uh, New Life Lutheran Church and some other things that Crystal will talk about in a minute. Um, but, uh, one thing that I wanted, uh, to make sure you understood is that we are the frontline support uh, for families in Norwalk and, uh, uh, Coming area. Uh, we help, uh, them when crisis. We keep them, uh, from being on the street. We helped somebody yesterday, uh, who was actually living uh, sleeping behind a dumpster because he had nowhere to go and helped him get an Uber to a shelter, uh, things like that, uh, that keep, uh, our city safe, but also keeps families, uh, together and safe. Um, we've kept people from losing their car, their home, sometimes even, uh, their children and kept families together. And we do it through relationships. We don't just throw money at people, um, but our volunteers, uh, number one, uh, being Crystal Ellis right here, uh, who is a volunteer, uh, who if we paid her, uh, we could not afford all the work that she does, uh, out of the kindness of her own heart and motivated by her strong faith. But, uh, we develop relationships with families to understand what it is they actually need, so that when people give us money, uh, they know we're not just making people go away. But we ask questions and we get to the root of the problem so that it's sustainable, so that hopefully we don't have to help them again. But sometimes it means, uh, that if we help them this month, we need to help them next month too, because if we don't, then we wasted our money last month because they're gonna end up on the street. And, uh, we've got the flexibility and the patience to really walk with families, uh, to do that. And I'm gonna let Crystal talk about, uh, a lot of what we do, um, uh, beyond just the, the frontline support, the, the crisis care. Uh, we've got a number of ministries and initiatives, uh, that try to get it problems before they happen. And so with that, I'll be quiet and let Crystal, uh, share as our number one, uh, volunteer. And by the way, if Crystal were to disappear from Norwalk tomorrow, uh, you all would know it, uh, because the amount of work, uh, that she does, she's our primary, uh, social service coordinator, uh, social worker, uh, counselor, uh, pastor to the community. Uh, it's amazing what she does, and I see it, uh, literally, I think, almost every day of the week. So, uh, thank you, Crystal. Ends with that.
I'm Crystal Ellis, and, uh, my husband and I moved here about twenty-seven years ago. So we've enjoyed living in Norwalk, and there's a lot that we feel that Norwalk has off for families, and we just want to help to bring that to the surface so all families can have it. Um, the whole purpose of the ministerial association is not to just, like Travis said, give a handout, but to give a hand up. We're not trying to just make them go away. We want to help them get on their feet and be able to walk and run on our own and be able to be sustaining themselves and their family and just growing. And that's gonna be help with the family dynamics also. There are times that we help with things like rent and, um, utilities and, uh, medical or gas or vehicle. And last year alone, we, um, paid out over twenty thousand dollars in all of those things, just in those programs. But there are other programs that we do. As you know, the food pantry is one of the main things that the ministerial started with. And, um, they've averaged this year so far eighty-two families a week is what they're averaging. We also have the mobile food pantry that comes to Norwalk, and if food is free from the Food Bank of Iowa, we just have to provide the location and the volunteers. But we've been serving a hundred and thirty-six households last year. Each time was our average. We've had up to close to two hundredish one, one time, but you know, it's around a hundred and thirty-six households that we're serving every time, and that equals about three hundred and fifty people, um, that's being served. We also do another type of food program, and this is just to help get food in people's bellies and not into the dumpsters. And as we do food rescue with Fairway and with Come and Go, both Come and Go stores. And last year, we rescued over twenty-six thousand pounds of food. We've been doing this since two thousand and nineteen. Many of you probably didn't know that. Um, we take it to three different apartment complexes that are all in need. They all have families that are either, um, fixed income or they are in subsidized housing. And since two thousand and nineteen, I have figured out how many pounds because I just was curious what we were at. And as of last month, we've rescued over ninety-three thousand pounds of food. If you think of during COVID was part of that time, how much did that help people? You know, there are people in our community that were able to eat that otherwise probably would have eaten meals. Um, so that's something that we're really thankful that we were able to help with. Um, we did start a program called Warrior Giving Wednesdays. You may have seen some flyers up around town, and that we ask for the community's help with, and that's to provide things that they cannot get with their food assistance. And the reason why we're doing that is because we found that there's a lot of families that they just can't afford to go out and buy toilet paper or laundry soap or things like that all the time. So they may be down to pay their bills, and they look at their bank account or they look in their wallet and they have twenty dollars left, and they're like, okay, I need to get diapers for my kids. I need to pick up a gallon of milk. I need to get, you know, you start naming off those things, and they have to make those hard choices. So we started this program, um, it was in two thousand and twenty-one, so this is our third year. And this year, we have had an average of over eighty families since February, March, and April, February is when we started. So those are all Norwalk families that are coming and getting assistance. The good thing is, is we found last year at Christmas time, when we do our Warrior Giving Project, where we give away Christmas gifts to children and help families also, um, that those families that come regularly, they, their needs weren't quite as high. So there's a difference we felt that was being made because they are showing that there's a help and they're slowly getting that lift up. So there's a, there's a way that we could kind of, because we're trying to figure out, how do we figure this out if we're making a difference? So that was something that we were very, um, thankful for, that they were able to get that. Um, we also, I mentioned about, um, the Warrior Giving Project for Christmas, just to give you as an idea of what we do at Christmas time. We had over a hundred and twenty-two households that we helped at Christmas time. They were all Norwalk families and households. There were a few that are elderly. Um, that was equal to two hundred and fifty-four children that were helped. And, um, we've also provided some assistance to families. That might be through help with rent or help with fixing a car or something like that, that they need help to get to work. Um, and we gave out over twenty-five thousand dollars in assistance to the families. Um, and then afterwards, we have some money left over, so we, um, put, uh, over four thousand dollars towards helping pay off the school lunch balances along with the help of another, um, donor. And then also was able to pay towards school fees for children that needed to, that their families weren't able to pay. Um, we also, at the end of, or this summer coming up, we are getting ready for lunch in the park. And, um, thankfully, with the help of our Parks and Rec Department, we have, uh, reserved the pavilion over here at City Park. And, um, with the help of Jesus Simpleton has helped in the past that they come by and just kind of, you know, mosey in, let the families know that they're there and, and just make connections. Um, last year, we had re-brought lunch in the park back. All the churches take turns serving the lunches. And last year in two thousand and twenty-two, we served over a thousand eight hundred, or a thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight souls. That, that threw lunch in the park for those twelve weeks. We averaged a hundred and fifty people coming, but we also give take-home bags. And there are many businesses in town that help to provide the food for those take-home bags, and we gave out nine hundred and twenty-three of those, and that was to children. So they'd have food during the week to eat. Um, we also do a shoe love at the end of the summer, um, which is for back to school. So we will, we give away, um, brand-new athletic tennis shoes and, um, a package of socks, athletic socks. And this year, we're adding a package of underwear, and this will be now our third year coming up for shoe love. And we gave out around two hundred pair of tennis shoes to children last year. So, um, the last thing that we do, and this is one that, um, basically we do basically off of donations is people that are maybe getting newer furniture, but their furniture is still good. We have a, a furniture closet. And we have given out over fifty pieces of furniture already this year, just since, don't worry. Families moving into town that maybe didn't have anything, or we found out there were parents that didn't have a bed, or maybe their kids didn't have a bed, and then we refer them to the, um, now I can't think of the name of the group that makes the beds, um, but, um, otherwise, yes, they can have any piece, yes. We refer them there, or if we happen to have a twin bed and they only need one, we give that to them too. So we just try to help out as many ways as we can. And it's just building those, as Pastor Travis said, those relationships with people and finding out what their true need is, because a lot of times they may come in a crisis situation. But then you find out that there's other things that they need along the way that will help them, you know, that helps them to feel like they're a whole person that can take care of their family because we don't want them to be stressed so much that they're taking it out in anger at somebody because they don't know what else to do. So we just try to help them as much as possible. Do you have any question?
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, I do have a question, and it's just because I'm curious. It's not, I'm not, I'm not accusing or making any accusations. What, what's, do you know what the overlap is between the mobile food pantry and our regular food pantry as far as families that are?
Um, I don't know the exact families, but I know that we, the mobile food pantry with the Two Cent of Iowa, and, um, one of the things that they say is it has to be able to serve anyone in the state of Iowa. So we get some people that come from Polk County, and we may get a few that come up from like Indianola or something. Um, we've had a one, two, or a couple from Winterset, you know, too, but like an a hundred and thirty-five average, um, that typically is around a hundred and fifteen is Norwalk. Okay. And then it's just very small portion that is on the others. So it's majority is Norwalk. I would say some of those families may be those. Um, and there's difference in some of the food that we get. Um, and it's just once every other month. So we only have six times in the year where a regular pantry is every week, and they can come up to three times a month. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the
It's, it's, all of our volunteers are wonderful, and it's definitely something that I build it. It's not just me doing it. It's and all the trades.
Good. Thank you. Pastor, anything else? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Uh, item B on the presentations. Ryan Huesman's here for, um, Houston Construction Hotel Project. This the right?
Yeah. I think we said we're gonna take a good.
Yep. Just give me a nod when I need to go.
Um, Ryan Huesman, Houston Construction, um, four eight zero nine North West Fifty First Streets. Um, I'm really glad to finally be up here for such a long time. Um, as you may have heard, there's some hints that we are looking at a Hilton Hotel, uh, and this is a True By Hilton. So, uh, many people aren't quite as familiar with this brand since there's only one in Iowa right now, um, in Cedar Rapids, but I, uh, hear some rumors that there's probably gonna be three to four in Des Moines in the next like two years. So hopefully this is one of them, but, um, the True By Hilton is a mid-scale hotel, um, but it kind of pushes the upper mid-scale levels with the different amenities and price point that it sits at. So, and, uh, with the Marriott, actually, uh, they're an upper mid-scale hotel, but they're kind of pushing the, uh, upper scale or upscale brand, but yeah, different bar amenities, et cetera. So, um, a little bit differentiation between the two, uh, price points. So, yeah, um, Hilton Honors, obviously very big, just like Marriott, um, still growing quite extensively. Um, obviously, the Hilton Honors points is a big part of Hilton, um, nowadays in all hotels. Outdoubled, it looks like, over the last five years, believe just under Marriott, but, um, still very strong. Um, and there's all the brands that Hilton offers. Um, so there's the economic impact, of course, um, that we hope to, uh, help bring to Norwalk. Um, this diagram is actually from the Iowa Tourism, uh, nonprofit website. Um, it's a little dated. I believe it's from two thousand and nineteen. Um, but as you can see, that lodging and food and transportation stuff all help get those dollars spent here in Norwalk. So we're looking at creating, um, twenty to twenty-four full-time jobs. Um, looking at having, um, possibly a meeting room, uh, and convenience store as, as well, um, to help create some additional revenue. So, yeah, this is just again a breakdown of some of the jobs that we hope to provide in Norwalk. Those may vary a little bit, um, but those are about the industry standards, average, um, based on this size of hotel. Okay, so, um, these are the, the numbers that we have pulled or forecasted, um, based on the hotel R and D feasibility study that you guys, uh, provided. Um, so that's the occupancy. Uh, we are looking at eighty-two rooms. Though we're actually going to probably change the mix-up, um, as well between kings and double queens and favor pretty heavily the double queens, just like the feasibility study recommended. But we are looking at eighty-two rooms, um, for Norwalk, um, which comes out to twenty-nine thousand rooms available per year. Based on, uh, the spending that was, um, forecasted for, uh, based on our feasibility study and, uh, those tourism data from the previous slide. That's all broken down there in the middle there in the green. Um, and then with the hotel motel tax and the, uh, tax rebate, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty significant. Um, like I said, this is forecasted, but, um, over a five-year period, um, we're looking at about thirteen million dollars spent in the Norwalk area if we, these occupancy levels that we are looking at. So, pretty good. Um, anybody have any questions on this side here? I know there's a lot of numbers there, but it's, you know, a lot to throw at you, but.
But no, when do you expect to be able to, when do you anticipate being able to get started?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. Um, we are looking at this fall getting started. Um, it's about a tall mud turnaround, uh, project, so fall of two thousand and twenty-five for, yeah, two thousand and twenty-four. I mean, sorry, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, oh, oh, I, I forgot this part two. Um, the, uh, these numbers, um, a little bit different from the other hotel, but we actually also have an outlaw parcel. So, um, we're looking at three and a half acres on the H and H land, and so this does not include the outlaw, the potential tax rebate implications that that could help as well. Um, obviously, you're familiar with Two Century Crossing. Um, the true logo there is a pretty accurate where we're looking at. Um, that being, um, a little bit farther back from twenty-eight, but, uh, still very close to obviously those sports and on Chatham and so, next slide. Um, so this is our concept, uh, site plan as, at the moment. Um, so we have our outlet there on the left, and then obviously the fair, the new fairway is on the very far left with their site plan. And, uh, as you can see there, we do have our indoor pool on the back east side of the building there. Um, with the parking and, uh, fire lane access all around. Says eight to two parking spaces, and then we are looking at a full access on Chatham at the moment. So.
And it looks like you did some adjustments to bring that building closer to Chatham.
Yes, yes, good point, good point. Um, so, yeah, so, um, based on that easement, you can see there that, uh, the easement on Chatham kind of gets a little wider on the east side there. Um, so it kind of threw us off a little bit, but that corner, southeast corner of our building is about ten feet from the easement at the moment. Um, and so right now, it's just a fire lane access and the, the, the parking's all on their side, so. Any other questions on the concept? So the lobby, uh, I want to try to, uh, break down the brand a little bit better, um, for those of you that aren't so familiar with it. Um, the whole point of the true is, uh, kind of favored towards millennial and generation C. Um, so, uh, the goal of the True By Hilton is to get people out of the rooms and out in the community. And so, including the, and so they want people hanging out lobby, interacting and having fun together. Um, so the lobby actually is pretty large, actually, compared to most hotels. Um, so there's actually four zones, what they call it there. Um, eat, play, lounge, work, um, for all the different areas with the centralized, um, front desk, which is pretty new to the hotel industry. Um, and that's also where the, um, uh, convenience store is. As you can see on the bottom there, on some of the additional, uh, benefits and amenities that we're looking at offering at the moment. So, again, the, with this being one of the newer brands out there in the hospitality industry, they are going a lot more digital and smart. So everything in the room is run by your phone, um, your lights, your TV, um, your lock on your door, your digital key. Pick, pick the room from your phone, all that stuff. So, um, helps also with like COVID and stuff and people not touching, you know, light switches, et cetera. So, it's been pretty favored here the last couple of years, to be honest. Um, so a good timing on that. We also have connected rooms. So as the sports, um, teams come, of course, and chaperones and stuff, they can watch over the kids and stuff a little bit better. Hilton really, uh, likes that for future, um, free Wi-Fi, free breakfast, um, possibly EV charging stations um, as well, and it's, uh, pet friendly too, so. Um, next, again, so public space, uh, we'll talk about that too much, but just a few pictures there, um, on the convenience store, kind of the workstations, um, and then the play area, um, and kind of lounge, game area, so, next. Um, the market, community store, um, what's cool actually about the market here, um, is we will have a few alcohol sales. You can see on the bottom right-hand corner. Um, so, but part of the, the true brand is they really try to push local. And so, so we have those local stickers basically on all stuff local throughout the hotel. Um, so we could even have like a superhero beer or something in the future. Um, but yes, as well as some national, uh, brands as well, like Miller and stuff. So it's just up to us and, and so, uh, next. Okay, so the local mural, um, trying to incorporate a little more art and, uh, into the city of Norwalk. And a big part of the True By Hilton brand is a customized mural in all lobbies. Um, all sizes are the same, but, um, a third-party company designs. There's some examples right there, um, to help explain people when they come to Norwalk, a little bit about the area. So that's a part of the brand as a requirement, so. Uh, fitness center, um, lots of hotels have fitness centers, but I will say that as a, you know, millennial, um, it's a little bit more newer, um, style, I guess, than the traditional one, and it's also quite a bit bigger. Um, in case the athletes want to, uh, get in shape and warm up before there were sporting events, so I think that's a good feature to add, so. Um, yeah, that's just more some of the breakdown of some of the stuff that's can be offered in the fitness room. So, um, anybody have any questions so far?
Saved in three of them, three different ones, and, uh, I'm very pleased.
Oh, well, thank you. Uh, may I ask which ones that they were?
No. Uh, yes, um, and I'll screw this up. It was a long trek from Iowa to Miami. So there was three of them on, like.
Okay. Um, yeah, our manager. Um, so yes, this is some of the other cool features and amenities that we're looking at offering. Um, the big picture there is outdoor patio, uh, gas fireplace, a giant Jenga, et cetera. Hoping to have that on the north backside of the building, northeast side of the building, next to the pool, um, right off the lobby there. You can kind of see through the back windows. Um, we're also looking at a truly, uh, local wall. So right as you look out the elevators, basically, um, this is in every true, uh, staff recommended pick, picks different restaurants, shopping areas locally that people that aren't familiar with, that they can go and say, hey, where do I need to go grab a drink or go eat or shop. And so that's right there as you get out of the elevator. Said staff picks, so that's pretty cool. Um, also, we're looking at a hydration station. Got to say hydrated when you play sports, of course. Um, I will also say we do offer, um, reusable, uh, water bottles at the convenience store. If people forget theirs to buy. Um, for the hydration station and then, of course, the indoor pool. So gotta have that. For the hydration station and then, of course, the indoor pool, so gotta have that. And then there's just the overall picture of the lobby area and uh anybody have any questions? No, sorry. Um but yes, uh.
This is not a commercial thing?
Uh that one is, um it's kind of depends on our uh kind of procurement design um and what we pick. We have some flexibility with, you know, like different, just like the Marion stuff, but um it's just. Kind of preference, you get A, B, or C pretty much um for design wise, but. You can do title. It's also due to supply constraints lately and stuff, they've been making a little bit more flexibility, but. And that's in our exterior here, but. We are, it's gonna be flip flopped, I know I can't show us a lot for that, but it's gonna be flip flopped. So the we're looking at the big sign there on the side, left hand side, actually being a long shadows. Well, thank you.
Okay, item number six, proclamation. So this week we have a public service week is uh May seventh to thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Economic Development Week is May eighth to twelfth, twenty twenty three. And National Police Week is May fourteenth to twenty twenty three. And look at those, those will be posted on social media and in the paper as well, so. See the content there. Uh items set or look in the council package, it's available publicly. Uh item seven is consent agenda. Uh tonight we have expenditures, tax abatements. We have an April twentieth, twenty twenty three minutes of the Red River City Council meeting. A resolution setting May eighteenth, twenty twenty three for a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment. To establish the done property planned unit development at eleven point twenty two acres south of Delaware Street and west of Highway twenty eight. That resolution setting date for public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment. Uh Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott Hotel in Norwalk Central. Have set public hearing for May eighteenth, twenty twenty three to approve the fiscal year twenty three budget amendment. Uh the resolution approving second payment to signature companies and Atlanta Bank for the Beardsley Sewer Project. A resolution approving a twenty eighty agreement between the City of Norwalk and the Animal Rescue League of Iowa Incorporated. A resolution to approve a contract with Backflow Solutions Incorporated. A resolution approving a grant award for Warren County Philanthropic Partnership for the Norwalk Central QR Code Project. Have a renewal for classy retail alcohol license for come and go at five thirty North Avenue. Whoever right renewal for classy retail alcohol license for come and go at twenty nine ninety one sunset. Can I get a motion? Motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight, we have old and new business for consideration, discussion, and possible action. Uh item A is a continuation of a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to chapter one seventy five C dot O four. Airport hazard height and noise mitigation overlay zoning regulations. To update requirements for the navigation easements. Uh as indicated in the in the text there. Uh we were still waiting for P and Z's recommendation on this item, so we'll continue this public hearing at our next meeting. Item eight B is a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to change seventy six acres of land at two fifty Beardsley Street. From AR Agricultural Reserve to R one sixty single family residential, so we'll open up the public hearing at six thirty four PM. So this rezoning is for a single family residential uh subdivision. We were introduced to this project several weeks ago where we saw draft master plan. The developers are now ready to proceed and take the next step, which is rezoning, so Luke Paris, I'll let you drive this.
Sure, thank you. Um again, this is uh. The Ron Family Farms property between uh the development known as Shadow Creek to the west. And Legacy Golf Course to the east um off of Beardsley and the opposite of Clearwater Drive. Um on the west side of the property is the creek that I believe is unnamed that comes out of the Legacy Golf Course and goes up to. Uh Lake Holchester. And so this proposal is uh to rezone from the current ag zoning to R one sixty single family. That would be um single family with a sixty foot lot with uh minimum. Fifteen foot setbacks, so seven and eight um on the setback requirement for R one sixty. Um other than that, this is a pretty simple rezoning, it's not a P U D, so there's no um unique requests or anything. It's just uh asking to go to single family zoning. Um our current land use plan that we adopted in November um does have the area as low density residential. So this zoning would match with that.
Uh Lindsay, have we received any oral written comments on this item?
We have not.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and. Oh, yeah, come on up. Uh could you, could you state your name and address?
Mike Bunce, two oh one Thornhill Road. Yeah, I saw the gentleman earlier. Uh so there's developers already in line, so there's owners, new owners to this property?
They're they're in the process of purchasing it, so, yep.
And uh so residential, any timeframes on? When they're, I suppose it can be utilities, sewer, water.
Yeah, the so this rezoning would be the first kind of step in that. Um this process requires three readings from the council, so they'd be here for two additional meetings after this. So we'd be looking what uh first, first of um June, actually, actually, the first of June. Meeting um for council would be their third reading approval that. We have had a preliminary plat submitted to the city for what the layout would be. Um so we're actively reviewing that, and so I wouldn't anticipate that. That would come to P and Z and council around that same timeframe, so that puts in a June approval of a plat. Uh once they have that preliminary plat approved, then they can start um instruction of various public improvements. So we would probably see that happen mid to late summer, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that kind of update there. So the preliminary plat, is that a? Probably can view that at some time, or is that?
So um it doesn't do, we don't have public hearings for subdivision plats. So you want to get a notice like you got for this meeting, uh but they do come to planning commission and council, they're on each of those agendas. So if you want to reach out to me and just kind of ask when we think it's gonna be on, or if you just pay attention to our agendas online. Um it'll be called uh Saddle Ridge is kind of the name of the development, so if you see Saddle Ridge on an upcoming agenda, that's likely gonna be it.
I guess my question is, when is it, uh you know, plat is where it's all streets, property lines and all that? So that's that's not set yet, or you saw preliminary plat?
Yeah, the the preliminary one kind of shows the general layout of that, and that gets council and staff and uh commission approved. And that that's what kind of then sets it in place, so that's, they call it preliminary, so it sounds like it's like not set in stone, but it really kind of is. Um once it's done.
Preliminary, is that uh without hearing all that? Heat up, or is, could I see preliminary, can the public see the preliminary plat?
Yep, yeah, so one one way would be to pay attention to those agendas and stuff. Um they're also public documents, so if you want to come in and ask to take a look at it, um you can come into our office, we're right down there. Just know that before it gets to a commissioner or something, something you see is gonna be a draft. So we're right now, we're in the process where we're going back and forth with our comments on the city code. And the developers making their tweaks based on that, so. Um there's a little bit of give and take and changes until it gets to the commissioning council, so, yep.
Okay, well, yeah, I live just on the east side of that partial on Thornhill, wraps around Thornhill and Turnberry. I suppose interest that legacy to build homes. Backs to the golf course is pleasant to look at and all that stuff, so I suppose that would be. Without seeing it, do you see that that's where they're gonna target just right along the east?
Yeah, I mean, just to go back to the map, I mean, essentially the the seventy six acres there. You know, it it becomes a neighborhood, so there's not like any big chunks of open space. Um this the park that we've discussed for the area would be a linear park, but that'd be on the west side of the property along the creek, so um, yeah.
All right, thanks a lot, Luke, for their explanation.
And again, uh Luke Ferris, so if you want to just call sometime or email me, if you want to come look at stuff, we're happy to sit down with you, so.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at six forty PM. Item eight C, the first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning app to the city of Norwalk, Iowa. By rezoning two fifty Beardsley Street from AR Agricultural Reserve to R one sixty single family residential. So we just had a public hearing for the zoning change. Luke, you got anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, any discussion, questions, comments from council?
So by changing this, we're actually bringing it in line with our plan.
Correct. All right, any any other public comment? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the first reading? Lindsay, do you want to just toss the point on those?
Got it.
All right, uh would you go ahead and read roll?
Yes, councilmember Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston, no. Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Right, that motion carries. Item eight D, it's a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment. Chapter one seventy five G zoning ordinance architectural standards, so we'll open up the hearing at six forty two PM. Uh so we've had some discussions about architectural standards with emphasis on multi-story commercial structures. With potentially two whole hotels, the standards can specifically impact those projects. So this issue has now been to P and Z, and they have provided a recommendation to council, so Luke Paris, I'll let you take it from here.
Yep, so a lot of text in the staff report, so I'm not gonna go through a lot of that. Um but certainly, if you have any question on how we got here, um I can circle back to that, but essentially we have a couple hotel projects looking at town. And both have indicated that our current standards would make it difficult for those projects to come to fruition. Um particularly in relation to the amount of our higher quality material that we would require. Um right now, we would require anywhere from half of the building to eighty five percent of the building to be. Uh high quality materials like brick and stone and those types of things. So we went back and kind of looked at some things we could do, uh had our planning and zoning commission. Public click, public hearing uh last week and uh discussed things with the developers at that point in time. And ended up with a kind of compromise scenario where um the goal of what we're trying to do is. Ensure that most commercial buildings that are of one story nature still follow our um. City standard city code of those percentages of the higher quality materials. And then pulling back on how strict the requirements are for anything that's second story and up. So essentially what you would do in a hotel scenario would be the first story would be. Anywhere from fifty to eighty five percent brick and stone, glass, that type of stuff. And then the upper stories where a planning commission landed was allowing it to be up to eighty five percent class three material. So um that was a discussion point back and forth between the uh applicant. Against the the hotel developers here, they're not really an applicant in this zoning situation, but um. That was a discussion between those interested in building uh these larger commercial projects in town and uh P and Z, and they. Kind of all came together, that eighty five seemed like a good number to to allow the uh type of use that we're talking about. So um what this ordinance does is sets that for our C two, our TC. And our C three and C four districts. You can see the red text in the ordinance would be what is added, um but essentially that says that we'll keep that class one and two material. Consisting of uh the majority of the facade in each one of those. And then any story above the first floor shall be uh one and two material, class one and two consisting fifteen percent. And class three uh being eighty five percent, uh class four not exceeding ten percent. And then we added the definition there that the first floor of a building shall be considered the first occupied level building above grade regardless of height. So what we wanted to do was, um if you think of like the Gordon retail building, that someone could argue that's a two story building. Because that exterior facade is probably twenty foot tall. Um but we all know that's a one story building, so our normal standards would be applied to that entire facade regardless of its height. So uh Sydney Field House building would be a similar thing where we're talking thirty five foot tall building. Uh but really, it's a one level structure, so.
All right, Lindsay, have we received any oral written comments on this side?
We have not.
All right, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at six forty five PM. Item eight E is first reading of an ordinance uh regarding a zoning amendment related to facade material classifications in the architectural standards. So we just had a public hearing for the zoning amendment, amendment. Uh Luke, anything to add?
Um just from a staff perspective, uh architectural standards are tricky. Um we're not trained architects, so um it's hard to make a judgment call on some of these things from our perspective. Um but I have done a lot of research, looking at other communities, other hotels that get built. Trying to understand the material better, I feel like this is pretty in line with uh what we would see in other communities, so.
Any discussion or comments?
I don't have a problem with the ratios and about first floor, but the way I read this. Is that any story about the first shall incorporate class one and two and shall incorporate at least. Pre and core for the rest of it. Can we change that to be any story about the first floor shall incorporate class one or two materials together for present at least fifty percent? And may incorporate.
Yeah, sure, I see what you're saying, because we don't want to, we don't want to force, yeah, somebody wants to do more brick, yeah. Yep, that's good.
We're not gonna stop.
So that and that would apply to every.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Catch, anything else?
And this is a recommendation.
Any public comment? Hearing none, can I get a most to approve first reading as amended?
Second.
Motion by Reba, I'm gonna call Baker as the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item eight F is a public hearing regarding Wright Road Water Main Replacement Project. So we'll open up the public hearing at six forty eight PM. This project is helping Norwalk to ensure consistent and reliable water service across our community. So we had a hydrolo hy hydraulic study, is hydraulic study, it's okay. Hydraulic study done that helped identify a need for a a new main along Wright Road. Uh we were able to advance this project due to ARPA dollars from the federal government. Uh Tony Velezzi with B and K is the project manager on this, so Tony, I'll let you drive this one.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Yes, uh as the mayor said, this is a this is a budget budgeted project for the uh Wright Road Water Main Replacement Project. It's uh about nine thousand feet of twelve inch water main from Highway twenty eight uh along Wright Road and Coolidge. Uh over to uh Eightieth Avenue, we connect and then it then it goes north and connects to the existing twelve inch dead end main. It was constructed as part of the Brody's Landing improvements. Uh so um just to kind of recap, our uh we had our uh bid letting last Thursday, received a total of six bids. Uh they ranged from about one point five million dollars up to as high as almost two point five, two point five million dollars. That the average of those bids was about one point nine million, slightly more than that. Um our estimate of cost for this project was about one point seven million dollars. Our our low bid was received from Thorpe Contracting LLC. Um right about at our budgeted amount and may maybe slightly less uh. Um we may be able to verify that at just over one point five million dollars. Um we did ask, uh this is a company that we've worked with before, has a lot of experience with municipal projects uh in the. In the Des Moines metro area, we worked with them on about three or four recent projects as well, so. Um so. Uh with that said, I guess I'll try to answer any questions you have. Our recommendation through uh these resolutions you have before the council would be to award contract to Thorpe Contracting based on their bid of one. One million five hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Lindsay, have you received any oral or written comments on this side?
We have not.
All right, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at six fifty PM. Item eight G is resolution proving plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost regarding the Wright Road Water Main Replacement Project. So we just had a public hearing on this project, and this is the first of three resolutions. we just had a public hearing on this project and this is the first of three resolutions needed to get the project launched. Uh, council passed a resolution that approved the preliminary plan spec and form of contract investment for the project. So this resolution is the final approval for all of those. Tony, you got anything to add?
No, sir.
All right. Any discussion, questions from council?
I just have one that I ask every time we do something like this. Um, is this an opportunity to lay? Your, like for that, that usually ends up being too expensive, but it's not the sound we dug up. So we, in this particular part of town.
Tony, Stephanie is looking at me, but I think she really means to be asking you that question.
Yeah, and I had, I, I, I had a little trouble hearing her. I apologize, but I think, I, I think I know what she said. So definitely one of the things that we did early on in this project is reached out to the, uh, to the school district to see if they had a need along this corridor for another utility. Um, and, and they did not. Um, and so in terms of, you know, additional, uh, city infrastructure along here, we weren't aware of anything. Um, it wouldn't be typical to, to, uh, with this type of construction to put another, say, for example, you know, a franchise utility in the same, same trench, uh, over the top of our water main. So, uh, uh, we did reach out, uh, just want to let you know, we did reach out to the school district to confirm that they didn't have a need in this corridor, um, that we could, that we could, uh, um, couple with this project.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question, I guess. Well, is this, uh, intended then to go down the south side of Wright Road or? And will it turn up the, uh, east side there or?
Of eighty. So, so, uh, yes, it, it, it bounces around a little bit, uh, uh, along Wright Road based on the available corridor where the existing water main kind of following the course of the existing water main to avoid some, uh, other existing utilities and, and to be the least disruptive as possible along this route. So so it does switch sides along Wright Road, uh, a couple of times, starts out on the south side and, and goes back and forth a little bit. Uh, and then we do end up on the east side of Eightieth, uh, as, as we go north.
Okay, thank you.
Any, or any public comment? Uh, can, can I get a motion to approve resolutions?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
If that motion carries, item eight H is resolution warrant contract for Wright Road Main, Water Main Replacement Project. So this is the second of three resolutions needed to start the project. And this resolution awards the contract to Thorpe Contracting LLC. Tony, anything else to add?
No, sir.
All right. Any questions from council?
Motion.
Public comment?
Sorry.
You're fine. I got a motion.
Second.
Uh, motion by Livingston, seconded by Reva. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Item eight I. Resolution approving contract for bond, contract and bonds for the Wright Road Water Main Replacement Project. So this is the third and final resolution needed to get this project rolling. Uh, this resolution approves the contract and indicates how the city is going to pay Thorpe Contracting for their work. Tony, any, anything to add?
No, sir.
Questions, comments from council? Or public comment?
Motion.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reva. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Brian's going through.
Board's changing down here.
Uh, item eight J. Resolution approving the site plan of Forjay Retail Center. So this site is located, located just in the northeast of the New City State Bank. And Luke, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. So this site, um, is for a multi-tenant retail, uh, building in the Farms of Holland Development. It's about eight thousand square feet, uh, four bays, uh, for four potential tenants or it could be, uh, paired up with things. Um, kind of sits there at the corner of Turnberry. As Turnberry makes the turn to go north, south on that curve opposite of the, um, Farms of Holland Senior Living, uh, complex. Um, the site does have one drive-through spot on the west end. Um, approval of the site plan does need to, uh, contemplate waiving our queuing requirement, which would typically be eleven vehicles. And they have provided space for six vehicles in that, um, drive-through queue space. Um, architecturally, it meets, uh, all of our, uh, requirements being class one and two materials, um, for the site. So happy to answer any questions.
So, but where exactly is the drive-through? Are we going to end up with another metacap nightmare?
It is on the west side there where you, um.
Tell me where west is.
Yeah, on the left side. Sorry. Yeah, it would be, yep, that space.
So if there's too long of a line, are these cars going to be coming out onto?
Actually. I apologize. It's not that one. It's, uh, the north side of it is the queue. And you can see there's like a window space. Yep.
Oh, okay. So you could, so you could end up having cars blocking parking spaces if there's too many cars back.
But actually.
Same thing as we have in Metacap.
Yes.
If that's a wraparound driveway, it was much needed, right? You said there's six of them before you get to the parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, one. And don't back in either.
That's right.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
Did, uh, did the number of parking stalls, do you anticipate there represents any kind of a problem?
Uh, they have thirty-three stalls, which is the amount required for the site. So, um, from that side, they are compliant with parking amounts. It is a little of a unique arrangement because it's a long skinny lot. So, um, you kind of got parking on three sites to it.
Any public comment? Or other questions, comments, discussions? I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Baker. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Item eight K. Is resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat, Farms of Holland plat six. So this is the final plat for the site plan you just approved. Most if not all of the infrastructure was already there. So this appears to be, to me to be a formality, but Luke, I'll let you take it from here.
Yep. So this creates, um, two lots, uh, the lot that the site plan we just agreed to be on, then one lot south of that. Um, one thing I was remiss on mentioning on the site plan is it does also include a drive access that connects down to the, uh, City State Bank parcel. Um, so that was part of this development, uh, as we've had different proposals over the years. So it's always been how do they make that connection, uh, from Turnberry down to the City State Parcel? So that gets solved with that site plan. Um, and that drive will be, uh, kind of the center property line, uh, between these two lots. Um, will, will be along both of those private drive accesses. Um, so other than that, yeah, it creates, uh, second development lots, um, that can then be developed out. And then infrastructure wise, uh, all infrastructure is there. So again, we're just creating parcels with this.
Does that leave two lots up there then for development of the, this, the, I mean, in that area?
Um. Yep. So on the other side, that's not in here, that's split into two lots as well. So there would be potential for three.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So there's, there's two undeveloped lots along the highway and then there'll be the un, one undeveloped lot south of this retail place. So and then of course there's a lot, um, east of City State Bank as well.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Anything else from council? Or public comment? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Whatever. We're good, I do.
Lindsay, can you do the coin toss again?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Okay, this I, item eight L is resolution approving an amended development agreement with Diligent H C C LLC. So I wasn't here for the M O U, but my understanding that that this amendment to the diligent development agreement is to take the hotel ground out of the agreement, which is going to allow the city to use TIF incentives for the Fairfield Inn and Suites. And this is a great example of a good partnership. Where diligent is foregoing their TIF rebates from property tax revenues to help ensure the hotel project proceeds. Uh, diligent, along with the city, recognize that these incentives are crucial in moving the hotel project forward. Holly, did I get that right?
Yes, and actually I think this particular amendment does not have to remove the parcel out of this tip area. They're just, they've written it where it just diverts the TIF from that parcel to the hotel developer instead of Diligent. So it's kind of a nicer, cleaner process.
Okay. Cool. Anything else?
Okay, so.
Any questions for council? Or public comment?
Motion.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion or public comment? All right. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right. Uh, that motion carries. Item eight M is resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Huesman Construction LLC. So this M O U is for the new hotel that we heard about earlier. Uh, it's closely modeled after the M O U that was done for the Fairfield Inn. The incentive packages for the hotel, two hotels will be very similar. Uh, this M O U is a way to help us, for us to help Ryan and his team understand what incentives and ceiling the city is willing to pursue. Uh, we still have a number of legal requirements to address through the urban renewal amendment process. But this M O U helps set the stage and establish and understand, Holly and Ryan, that I'll let you take it from here.
Yeah, I would just add that, um, the M O U process became somewhat new to us earlier in the year because before all of these development agreements that we were putting through, they require TIP amendment, urban renewal area amendment. There's this huge legal process that takes months. And, um, you know, when it comes to developments, the timeline is very sensitive on how and when things happen. So thankfully our bond council said, hey, let's just start doing an M O U for some of these developments until they're fully ready to, to finish out the, um, development agreement process and urban renewal area amendment. And so what this is doing for the hotels specifically is, is allowing them to take that, um, preliminary incentive package to their financer so that they can also include that into their, um, franchise application. That, that's the main thing that it really helps these hotels with. Is that they need to get that act, that application turned in because there's a large non-refundable fee that they pay for that and then this sixty-day approval process. And they can't, um, start that without this piece. And, you know, we don't want to start the whole urban renewal area process without them closing on the land. So it's, yes, kind of a timing thing, but this helps everybody move forward.
I had one thing here, um, Ryan Houston, um, again, um, with timing and that you asked earlier, um, and to with this M O U, but our deadline is kind of actually Wednesday next week for our franchise middle. So, um, it's about forty-five days, uh, is what we were told today. So, uh, hopefully.
Don't let that sway her.
Yeah, yeah. Please, yes. So hopefully have an answer by June. So.
All right.
I would just like to add one thing about the Huesmans, if I can. They, they have been some of the most dedicated developer, developers, developing family. They've been a pleasure to work with and I'm, I'm happy that they've been patient and hung in there with us. And I knew them back in the day when we were working on projects in Carlisle, so familiar with them. And they're, they're just a good, um, development family. So glad this is working out.
Awesome. All right. Any questions?
Yes. Um, so you know, I'm not totally sold yet on everything. It says a city will do, but if I'm reading it correctly, section one, C liability says that the council can make changes, that, I mean, that is.
That's right.
That's our out, right?
Okay. That will usually haven't got through the process.
Right.
We, we did not have to put a final stamp of approval on this without going through, you know, the hearings and, uh.
Just wanted to make sure because it says what the city will do, will do, will do. And you don't, you have to wait till you all the way to the bottom.
Yeah, but that's right.
But you have.
Yeah.
Right. All right. Anything else? Or public comment?
Motion?
Second. Okay. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Baker. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right. Uh, item eight N is resolution approving a reimbursement agreement with Iowa Economic Development Authority or I E D A for certified site expenses. So Holly and Chris have been working hard to accomplish council's goal to establish a second certified site. This agreement is a requirement associated with the process. Basically, the agreement states that we will reimburse I E D A if the certified site falls fails through, due to action or falls through, sorry, uh, due to action taken by the city or the property owner. So we will have an upcoming agreement with the Dunn family that will address the same reimbursement. And city staff are currently working with Tom Dunn to get that agreement settled. Holly and Chris, fill in what I missed.
Um, yeah, the I E D A, they've been really flexible in this round, the updates that they've made in the certified site process. And so they've been really flexible with timing of when we get things. But one, one piece that we do have to turn in in May, which is this, is just that reimbursement agreement. And it's, it's really, like you said, it's only if, you know, once the sort of, the site has been certified and they've started the, the marketing process and they put all this, this money into um, the certification process and then the landowner or us, you know, whoever is the applicant comes back and says, we're just going to sell it on our own. We, we're not going to follow the um, requirements of the certified site because then it's, it's no longer in their program. So then we'd have to reimburse them for it. And then we, Jim wrote a reciprocal agreement for the landowners to reimburse the city if that were to happen. But we have to get this turned in now so that we can hopefully know by June before it's certified.
Questions?
So we could pass this, Jim, pursuant to the other agreements being negotiated. You could pass a contingent upon, yes. I don't think that's what the proposal necessarily is tonight. I think Holly um, needs it before, before that happens. So, uh, there is some exposure there. Initially, this was in the sit my desk and I reviewed it. I said, well, wait a second. We're guaranteeing to reimburse I E D A, that what, what is twenty-four thousand, five hundred? Is that what it is? At twenty-four thousand? Yeah, to twenty-four thousand, five hundred. If the property owner after it's been certified decides, okay, we're not going to sell it to anybody. We're just going to farm it. Or we're going to sell it to a family member and he wants to farm it. Uh, there is some exposure to that twenty-four, five. So what I said was, well, let's get, or, you know, a backup agreement where they agree to reimburse us if we have to reimburse I E D A. So that proposed agreement's out there. Uh, but uh, this proposal right now, tonight doesn't say that we're making a contingent upon them signing this. The council could do that. I don't know. I don't have the answer though. It'll be Chris and Holly do.
How that would affect the process if we put that contingency on there.
That would be, that would be sufficient for the state. They just need it as is. We just did this reciprocal agreement for our own use, um, but for the state, they, they need it as is. So.
Now, but just to.
Oh, you go ahead.
So, so this, this agreement, if we pass it, if the certified site never gets certified.
Right.
This is, this doesn't count at all.
And we do have budgeted funds. We do have, um, funds set aside for the certified site process, but whatever fees that would include. And as of right now, like Chris went out and got all of the engineering studies. We have that approved. And so even with the engineering studies that will undertake, even if we did have to pay this, we're still within that set aside budget for the certified site. We'd want to spend on that, but we do have.
There really isn't a lot of jeopardy on it because even though we are signing this without guaranteeing their reimbursement, it does take effect until it's certified. And there's a whole pile of documents that property owner has to sign and agree to get it certified in the first place. So this will be one of those documents in that file. And if he refuses to sign any of those. So this will be one of those documents in that pile. And if he refuses to sign any of those, it'll suck and get certified. So this will never take effect because it's only going to affect him once it's certified and then something happens with the property owner, he moves property.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Explain that, I appreciate it.
Well, first of all, that's what I was going to say, but to add to it, um, also the expenditures, any of the engineering things that we're doing, all of these make that property more saleable, even if for some reason we don't accomplish a certified site. These are still all the components that somebody that's looking at this property would want to utilize it. All of those are important things they would need.
And there's a backup. I don't know if Chris wants to talk about it or not, but there's kind of a backup program that we're um, involved in too with the Greater Des Moines Partnership called the Site Readiness. Um, so it's, she's been attending those meetings, but it's basically like a, a certified site light. So instead of having to go through this whole process with the state and, you know, do all of this, um, you know, due diligence ahead of time, you're, you're doing a lot of those pieces, but your land is still marketable by the Greater Des Moines Partnership. And we would, like Luke said, those engineering studies, we want to have those done regardless of being certified because then we can utilize that when we go out to look at the site. Because we know it's for sale, whether or not we get everything we need back from landowner in time. So.
Hopefully that gives a little bit more.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion, comments from council? Or public comment? All right, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Baker, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight O, resolution setting June the first, twenty twenty-three for a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to chapter one seventy-five A dot thirty-six. Privately owned improvement serving more than one property. So our current ordinance doesn't allow private drives to connect to public streets. Uh, when we passed this ordinance, our focus was residential and we didn't think about private commercial frontage roads being included, but we have such a road in front of us now. Who's always take?
Yeah, that's the gist of it. Um, with the fairway project that we did switch to public to follow our ordinance, um, that resulted in a lot of internal discussion about was that the intent of this code language? Um, I think when you read it verbatim, it says that all, it's all private streets, right? So that's why we decided, uh, we were going to go back to fairway and have them change that uh, huge drive to public. Uh, but we wanted to give the opportunity to kind of come back to this circle around to it and see if that really is the intent of what we want to do with this code section, or if there needs to be um, some kind of consideration for that, this. So um, similarly to the architectural um, discussion we had at the last council meeting, um, this isn't necessarily a big debate on what it should be. It's just, should we look at it or not? And uh, then we'll go back in craft language if we want to and take it through a full process. So is that? I know Jim had some concerns last time with architectural thing, but um, so we really we're not in a public hearing talking about what the zoning should be. It's more just a staff direction for what we should do. And that can take the form of setting a resolution for a public hearing so we can start that process. Or we could do something different if you want to have a work session on it or something, so.
Okay. Questions?
But Jim's concerned with just procedure. Yeah, I mean, this, the last, the last, remember the last meeting we did similar to this, where we had presentations and we're already doing an awful lot of information, factual gathering, that's really more appropriate for public hearing aspect of it. Now, when we were to go, just have council leaders to consider it or kind of the same, no, not considered that.
I did in the report, do a little bit of that, so, but I just, just want to kind of uh, do a little bit of background research to give you a little information on how some other big commercial developments in town tackle that private street thing. Um, so you can see uh, some screen caps um, in, in the staff report, so.
And Luke, am I correct that this is a discussion that we've had as staff? And that our recommendation is that we go back and take a look at that?
Yes.
Differentiate between commercial and residential?
Yeah, I think, I didn't see a recommendation. So to craft something discussed at all circumstances, so we probably should go back to take another look. Fairway, the only one that's currently noted on there that's going to be on the street. I'm guessing not Hy-Vee. I know the rest of them on the, I'm sorry, going north is what I.
Extend further north, the private road on the east side of City State Bank that's coming through the Forjay property. You look at others, technically still meets that definition where I would say is public, but that's already private. It started private. Way back when the, the Forjay uh, site plan you looked at actually dictated that to be a private road.
So they're.
Correct?
Yes, correct.
Now, they're expecting it to be private?
The Forjay?
Well, uh, fairway and everyone else that's.
Well, so the fairway one, we changed, we changed to public. So to, to match with our requirement, um, the four J one was a continuation off of that uh, city-state drive. So we felt like we needed to be consistent there and not have a public road start in the middle of something similar way to how we finished off the legacy on the west side. Um, oh, the four J one, a better scenario than the legacy drive, um, as far as how it shook out in the end. Um, we all know the issues on that side. Um, so really, it's just yeah, I, I think the, the thing that encapsulates it the best from, I think the staff perspective is if you look at what happens when huge drives hits the Hy-Vee parking lot, and if that was a public road going up to Colonial through the Hy-Vee lot, um, the very first staff example here is the Walmart uh, at Jordan Creek. And so, you know, what you would have would be Hy-Vee set back in the lot, a parking lot, and then a drive at the front of that lot. And the typical configuration of targets, Hy-Vees and all those things have these, their parking aisles come right out to that drive. So you can go out the aisle, circle back around, come back down. That density of connections to a public street, we typically want it allowed. So um, we would say, you know, have one driveway or two driveways come into your site and then do your circulation internal. So yeah.
So you try to have a little bit more flexibility.
Sure, yes.
I think we should let the city staff wrestle. I enjoy watching.
So this would go, the public, the city council hearing would be before the planning is anything?
No, we would, um, I'm sorry, I might have had.
Says that.
Yes, I have the dates backwards in there. That's my.
The city council's June first and.
But yeah, it should be, I'm sorry, that should be May twenty-second. I was, I was fiddling around with dates because I need to make sure that I have enough time to uh, notice for the, the P and Z one. And so I think I originally had you guys back on the fifteenth and I, my apologies, I forgot to change the planning zoning ones, but we would be planning and zoning on May twenty-second.
I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Yes, yeah, I don't want to cut them out of the process.
I, I think would be a good thing to do.
Me too.
Public comment? Hearing none.
But the, the resolution actually says that the public hearing will be set for May fourth?
Man, I just.
Okay.
I may have wrote this one Friday morning, trying to get it.
It's good in the header. It's not good on section.
Yeah, we'll get that cleared up. It's June first. We want to do it June first, May twenty-second.
Send it with the right dates.
Motion with right dates and then second with the right dates, uh, by Livingston and Reba. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight P, it's the second and final reading of an ordinance amending chapter one seventy-seven rates and fees regarding aquatic center fees. So this ordinance changes to increase rates and fees for the aquatic center. Robin, do you have anything to add?
Um, just that in the agenda statement on this um, that I turned in this time, I have updated the non-resident rates. So the items in red are the um, rates at forty percent um, on top of the resident fees.
Perfect. Any questions or?
And she did take it to uh, the commission last night and. I think there was.
Yeah, they were on board with that thought process as well.
Awesome. Good deal. Any other comments from? Or public comment?
Motion?
Second. Uh, good thing. Uh, motion by Livingston, seconded by Baker. Uh, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Would anybody like to?
Yeah.
I'll give it to Baker. Baker, Baker moves to, skip it, me too.
Okay, so translated that is a motion by Baker and. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba? Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight Q, special event application, Fourth of July fireworks event. So this is for the fireworks display for Independence Day. Uh, I believe this is a separate item because Councilman Lester is the applicant. Uh, before I ask for a motion, I'd like to thank David and the Norwalk Lions Club for putting on our fireworks show. They do a great job with this community event. If you guys haven't been here, you should come and see fireworks. Pretty good show. Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion by Reba, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item nine, future agenda items. So the purpose for this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion to have items placed on future agendas. And this is not for discussion of the merits of the subject matter. So does anybody have anything that they want to add to a future agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to item ten, it's council inquiries and staff updates. Jim?
I guess though, one update I have is with our our nuisance house on the south side that we're working on. There's, we got an order in place a couple weeks ago. Uh, so that's, that's the final order that's in place. It gives them thirty days to do some all this shit to uh, begin constructing and fixing it up. Uh, I have also been, been informed that I think there's going to be a private sale that over to a construction company who's known to be able to rehab or or, or demolish. And I, I would expect the city to be a little bit flexible on extending that thirty days as long as there's decent progression. Uh, because it's definitely going in the direction we want it to go and it was, uh, you know, it'll be nice to get it moving and I would expect to see that really, really fast. So it's good progression.
Awesome. Anything else? Stephanie?
The M P O is a hot mess. And uh, a small group and the minority, I add, um, was on a mission to get rid of the executive director and they got their wish. Um, so uh, currently the um, acting interim director is Dylan and we are going to start a search for a new executive director immediately as soon as policy committee meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks. Ed?
Our daughter is right now is a, one where the, where the dome is and they got all.
Botanicals?
Botanicals. And she's collecting the uh, people's choice award for the best flower shop of the year for the second year.
Awesome.
Yeah.
We're really proud of her.
So yeah.
When the top, take an opportunity to say that, that somebody in my family is talented. Anyway, uh, but other than that, you know, things are going along well. I see a lot of uh, completion on a lot of the building projects we got going on on our streets. So that's a good thing. Appreciate that. And uh, I need to stop out there at the trailer because I see they got it moved in and the construction site and see if they got. Things are popping up there too.
Yeah, they are.
Or you know, anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, so April building permits, we ended up with thirty-four total. So that's a good number. Um, from our kind of review that we did last year of our five year averages, that's a high for an April. Um, and it puts us right on track for what our average year would be. So it'll be interesting to see if that high in April continues to kind of trend high and if we end up above uh, average, but um, it's good to see those numbers coming back to normal after uh, the stagnation last fall. Um, if you've noticed around Greg Young, they have paved the sidewalk. They finally got around to that. Um, they still need to go back and backfill around the edges of it, but uh, it's primarily done. So they really got on it uh, this week and got it all good. So, so that's good news. Um, grass and mowing nuisances are starting to pick up. Uh, we've had several people call and ask if the city does no mow May. If you're not aware, nobody in effort to try to uh, increase pollinators in uh, the areas, but we do not do no mow May. So if you smoke your lawns, we will come after you if you don't.
My wife doesn't let me do no mow May either.
I, I didn't get around to it until last week. I said I was doing no mow May for the first weekend. Uh, uh, and just reminders we put out on Facebook, but uh, don't blow your grass into the street. It's not allowed and it's dangerous for bikers. Um, got a few more LMI projects coming in the hopper, so that's good. Continuing to work on those. Uh, we issued the fairway building permit today. Um, but just know that process is a little out of order with the public road and everything. So we issued the building permit so they can start working on footings and everything. But we will still see some flats coming through incoming meetings. So normally that would be an opposite process, but we're going to get it all taken care of. Um, taking the next steps with N R C S to continue working on North River Sewer. And then just lots of just general development discussions in several areas of town that uh, kind of are the next big growth areas of the city. So you know, lots of those long-term planning projects that we've been talking about, the North River Sewer, uh, G fourteen, uh, you know, the South Road uh, connection out to the interstate, all that stuff, all those meetings are starting to happen and lots of good discussion coming up with those, so.
Awesome, thank you. Barry?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Tony?
Nothing else for me, Mayor, thanks.
Great, wait.
Couple things tonight, Mayor. The latest contract and street improvement project was done by I A D concrete. Depending on where you live, you may not have seen the work being done, but we did a lot of improvements on Richard George, Park Hill, Cherry Parkway and quite a bit on Cassidy. So we have some improvements done there. Work is, like Ed mentioned, progressing pretty well on both our major intersection projects. The project manager for Elder on Beardsley is a Norwalk native. He's been great to work with and I think he's trying extra hard to make things go as smoothly as possible there. The North Avenue project, if you recall, is scheduled to be completed last fall. They're estimating three more weeks. Uh, hopefully that delays for utilities. Snyder, now the engineer is at max budget for inspection. So we asked them to reduce their hours to minimize how much we go over on inspection. Uh, we still need some work to be done. It's my intent then to go back on the contractor to charge them with the daily damages, however the cost for additional engineering. Um, but it'll likely be a battle, but that's my intent moving forward. I'll keep you in the loop. The B S I back soil prevention contract agreement, we started that last year. They're currently tracking four hundred and fifty-seven actual prevention devices in Norwalk. Only thirteen are past due. So they're going to get in great responses and great um, tracking of those devices. The regular watering project approved is going to go through Warren County and Warren, where water district, if anybody asks, we're not acquiring territory or customers with this project, we're just cutting through to serve Norwalk on the east side. And then we're interviewing two firms next week for our next water tower project.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Chief?
Yeah, um, on the twenty-first of April, we worked with Parks Direct and planted some trees with the life event. How many trees got planted, you know?
Uh, yeah.
Um, the kids had a good time, even though it's muddy. Um, this week, we started lunch with the police where as many of us as are available, go to Orchard Hills and talk to a second grade class. And then go down to the lunchroom and have lunch with them. Uh, we got started a little late, which forced us to do two classes in one day, which meant. Two lunches in one day and a cheeseburger at Orchard Hills is good, but I don't recommend two of them. And today we advertised to start our third citizen police academy. Uh, the last time we did it was, it was canceled because of COVID and we haven't got it restarted. Um, we put things together and Alfred Haller is taking that under his wing and advertised it today to start June eighth. We have a limited twelve people, twelve slots. So looking forward to get that back going. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Holly?
Um, June second will be the proposed date that the turf fields will open and have kind of. Halfway. All opening of of tournaments. They're a little bit nervous because you know that once they get started, it's just going to explode. It's going to be crazy out there. So they're going to kind of open halfway. Uh, but we're out on site today with a catched moine, so the regional of tourism group that recruits all the really large sporting events and they plan out for years and years in advance. And they talked about some visits that they'll have with a major league baseball and some some different things coming up that they're going to be proposing this site to. So. They're really, really impressed and went around the entire site. It is enormous. Um, if you guys are interested in going on a tour of it, they can um, we can arrange that. For you, maybe throw it on a golf cart or something like that, Brian's cart. Um. But it is uh pretty cool and their turf is almost complete on the the one pod and it'll start it on the second pod. Um, parking lots underway, the the concession building is bigger than one would think. I think it's like twenty-two hundred square feet. It's a big building. We saw the area where the Amazon store will be and everything. Um, and then our building obviously has. A pad ready and the um Mid-American Energy Plaza is getting um put together, which is pretty cool too. So, yeah, we took some three sixty video and. Photos out there today. Um, it's it's pretty amazing. And Casey with Heartland was talking about this, you know, first international technology projects that they're going to be announcing soon and it was. Pretty wild, some of the things that's going to happen out there. Definitely first in the nation on some of these. So it's pretty exciting. Um. May thirtieth will be fairways um groundbreaking. So we're trying to kind of coordinate because June second is the opening of the fields. Um, so we're trying to kind of coordinate something since it's so close together to just have a little bit bigger media event out there, but the invites will come out for that groundbreaking event. And then. Last, well, today, actually, I think it was today or yesterday. All flooring together. We had announcements for Fairway as well as a new sponsor out at Norwalk Central. So they're sponsoring a couple of different aspects. So they'll. Be sponsoring one of the courts and then one of the fields. Um, so we just announced just the courts, just the city one, and then they had a separate announcement for the field sponsorship. So a lot of good just local sponsors coming on board. Last council meeting announced Starbucks and their site works already underway. That's moving pretty quickly. And the next day after our last council meeting, uh, we had the big Michael Foods expansion announcement, which was fantastic and super exciting. Um, the next council meeting we'll have, we're going to try to have the concessions agreement with the Sports Plex group because they have a a big beverage provider that's part of their. Overall concessionaire restaurant management move that's ready, ready to get this agreement signed. So we need to finish up our concession agreement. And then um plug that in. So we're going to try to get the next council meeting. And then um we'll all have social media and website policy. I think we're putting that on for a discussion and then potentially approving that updated uh policy. And then I will also be gone at meeting, but I will call in. I'll be down in the Luxy, bring him a man back. So we're ready to get him home. Uh, so, but I will call in. I'm sure Luke would prefer I don't, but. Makes me nervous, really. So I think a bit.
Robin?
Um, so just to tag along on the whole discussion over at Norrock Central. Um, as Ed said, the job trailer is on site and we're having bi-weekly meetings. Um. Good news, as all the soil sampling is done and um. They are all within design standards. So no more money will have to be spent on stabilizing the soil.
Yes.
Yeah. Um. Footings are all poured. This week, they're working on electric. Next week is plumbing. Um, every Friday at three P M, the contractors will sweep the site for trash and tidy up. And uh, Genova is um. The one that had mentioned that, so they will talk to everybody and make sure that happens. Um. So unfortunately, next meeting, I will have to bring forward another change order. Um, I am working with Genova to get more details. Um, but it's a revised duct work is the. Little bit that I know of right now. And then good news also is we are one month ahead of schedule. So, yeah. So hopefully. Joey, I'm bored. He's right next week. Yes. Um, and then Luke, will you pull the pool presentation? Just some pictures, not really a presentation. Um, so first, thank you for approving the fees and leaving that third reading. Um, tomorrow, we will push out the summer playbook and on May eighth, we will start selling season passes. And have swim lesson registration open. Um, water is in the pool now. We have, we're filtering it and starting to add chemicals. And we are fully staffed, so.
Yay.
Ready to go. Um. June second will be our first day open. And. What Luke is going to show you is just some. Updates that we've done to the pool uh last fall and already this summer. So there's some before and after pictures of the slide.
Sorry, Robin.
And that's.
I know I saved it on the hard drive, but I'm. Struggling to find it right now.
Do you want me to resend it?
Paint us a picture with you.
Or we can just send it out to everybody later.
Sorry, Robin. I even told you, make sure you remind me and you reminded me and I still don't have it.
Okay, so it's before and after pictures of the slide. Um, the slide is painted. It's a bright orange. Um, it looks really nice. Um, the building, the woodwork was redone, so that looks really nice now. Uh, benches around the outside and trash cans, we have artwork on them, so it makes it just look. Refreshed and nice. That's all I have.
Thank you. Lindsay?
Happy.
Brian?
I've had discussions with four or five staff members the last, I don't know, week or two weeks. Um, about the morale that uh the Facebook page, Norwalk Facebook page does. And I would just like to give reassurance to the staff. Uh, that there is virtually no credence ever put into anything written on Facebook. I can't speak for everybody on council, but I'm. I'm pretty sure on this, uh, we've all been told a million times that we're irresponsible and crazy. So. Anyway, we just embrace it and move on, but I just want the staff. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
That's good.
Good.
Okay.
Um, so I have a couple of things on. Last week, Luke and I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for um Icon Water Trails Projects at Scott Avenue Bridge. Um, it was great turnout and we missed half the speeches. Um, because we were outside while they were inside giving them. Um, I think it was very well received. I'm excited for that project to um actually get moving. And then on Monday. Holly and I and Chris, I see that he's left, um, hosted a delegation of mayors and the minister of local government from Kosovo. Um, for lunch in a discussion about the importance of um. The sister city relationship. There are several uh. New cities, both in Kosovo and in Iowa, that want to develop that relationship. So. Um, so I thought it was successful. Uh, Chris and um Holly did an amazing job pulling everything off and kind of fumbled through. My hosting responsibilities, but it worked. Um, and the minister of local government in Kosovo is told us that he is going, they are going to be posting. Some kind of an event. Um, a conference of some sort in November and he is, he, they're working on the. Format and everything and his goal is to dive a little deeper into city um partnerships and wants. Um. More than mayors to participate, engage and wants to get deeper into city staff. So we, I don't know what else. That's all I know about it. That's all kind of. We know so far, but um I'm happy that their um local ministry of local government is. Doing something. Um, they've been kind of involved, but I don't feel like they've really taken charge of much. And so I'm happy that they're doing that.
Thank you. Yep. I found it. Oh, that looks nice.
Oh, yeah, and the stairs too. On the next picture, you can see the rest and it's all gone.
Benches.
And the benches and trash can and the mural is done. We have a person on staff who's an artist and she freehands that stuff. So it's pretty cool. Yeah. She's really talented. Chrissy.
Thank.
Very good.
You got bad news, I think. Well, you know, it's not. It's not as bad as it could be.
Okay.
I had Doug Shaw, one of our previous county supervisors, called me today and he said, Luke, tell me about this property tax bill. And I told him it's not the best bill that was proposed that ultimately was adopted, but it's not the worst. Um, the reason I have all these numbers up here is because it helps me appreciate when I try to dive into something like this by myself when Jean's on vacation. And you know, you realize how valuable somebody is when they're not there. Uh, so I really need her to come back and uh help me navigate through some of this. What this will help us show in the future is what the impact of this bill will do to us. For this last fiscal year, I think I can comfortably say that this bill would have had no impact on us. The reason I say that is because we alone decided to lower the levy twenty cents. Lowering the levy twenty cents would have had the effective uh impact of the three percent reduction of growth included in this bill. That make sense? So. In a year where we can't or would not want to lower our levy. This state law may come in and say, but you're looking at a six percent growth. Well, we're going to take off that top three percent, which means you're only going to have three percent growth. So let's say six percent growth gives us four hundred thousand dollars of new money in that year. Functionally, that means we would only have four hundred thousand dollars of new money.
Regardless of the number of homes. Or.
Right, because the impact is they're taking whatever our growth is. And they're slicing off the top three percent. Uh, for slow growing communities, I think it's from zero to three percent. This functionally holds them harmless. Uh, if you grow from three percent to six percent, they take off two percent. Over six percent, which is typically where I would anticipate Norwalk would be, we get the full impact of three percent. So like I said, we've typically been operating in such a way that we've been lowering our levy. So it's possible that this doesn't have an impact on us. It's a good time to be in a community that has a relatively high levy. I can say that one time. So other things, uh, page twelve, it talked about the assessed value and what I just went over with you. Um, it also removes a bunch of the additional levies. So if Chief Porter came in and said, hey, we want to do an EMS district. Uh, this removes the ability to establish that levy. Um, if Gene Stravell came in and said, I'd like to do that twenty-seven cent levy for libraries, this takes that off the table and a bunch of other levies. I want to say there's about ten to fifteen. Other special levies that various cities will adopt. Uh, they removed all those and just pulled them under the general fund. Uh, it also gives the ability for people that are sixty-five and older homeowners, it gives them uh some additional tax credit. Of, it goes from thirty-two fifty. Affecting taxable value, taxable value exemption on their property up to about six thousand. We've ran some of those numbers. Uh, I want to say between this one and the military exemption that they talk about, it would probably impact our budget in the neighborhood of about twenty to thirty thousand dollars. And that's assuming we have a lot of military people in town and a lot of people uh sixty-five and old holder. So those are some high estimates. I doubt it would be that much of an impact. Uh, there's a few other changes. I won't go into the details. There is one positive in here. Uh, and they take the amount that you'd have to go out for bond rep around them from seven hundred thousand up to nine hundred and ten thousand. So a little bit of a benefit there. Oh, two benefits. It extends the amount of time we have to certify our budget by forty-five days. So instead of March fifteenth, we enter date, we get an extra about a month and a half.
In other words, they're going to take an extra month and a half to get us the.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Exactly.
This guy.
Wow.
So. Overall, I would say it's not as bad as it could have been. Um, and because of the way we're operating and handling our finances and the growth we've had. I think we should see that this should not be a tremendous financial impact on us.
Does that bill also do in some taxing authorities in the past? That taxing ability, that may not be pertinent to us, but just.
There are some, uh, there's a division in there. If if I'm answering your question correctly, there are some divisions in here that impact the school system and what. Um, what items qualify under TIF? They remove some of that. But as far as other, do you mean, um, you might have to clarify your statement a little bit more too.
Some of the entities were actually done away with.
Yeah.
They could levy. But uh, I I haven't had a chance to see it yet. I'd be interested in looking at it, but. If you get an opportunity to send the copy.
I will do that. That's the.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to prove.
Yes, it is. Um, it's this document. It's seventy-four pages. Uh, there are some divisions that impact the cities, counties, like it starts right out with county property taxes. I think you've got to go to page twelve before you hit the first city portion. But I will email that out to everyone.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it.
Uh, so the caveat that I'll throw out there is that this is a kind of a back of the napkin look at this, uh, these impacts. I really need to be able to sit down with Jean and dive into it. The League of Cities will also do some analysis and give us some further updates to really understand.
It's affection inside.
Uh, the only other thing that I have is Rotary Club did the North Avenue cleanup. It's around the curves out there. And um. I don't know if it's more traffic, you know, for the past few years, we saw things were a lot cleaner this year. Oh, there was a lot more to pick up. Of course, then the wind blew like crazy the day after that and.
On garbage day, on garbage day, forty-four.
That's all. Thank you. One thing I have is community chat will be in here. May thirteenth. Nine o'clock in this room and please come. And if you have any questions about anything that you see on the city's Facebook page. Instead of commenting on Facebook, just come on in and and we'll talk about it here. All right?
Just use more dominance.
You get more done that way. The visit to Idaho was great. He's he's pretty cool. Um, uh, he's pretty chill. Oh, yeah, it was pretty fun.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I'd entertain a more.
Sure.
All right. Okay, so motion by Baker, seconded by Livingston. All of them favor I?
All right.
All right.
Both both saying, we are adjourned.